We go to corn.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go in here.
Stay near the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do some other neighborhoods. But, Southern Corbin, we've been through Aurora to St. Thomas and St. John's.
I've heard St. Thomas is pretty bad now.
St. John's is much better.
Yeah.
St. John's.
St. Thomas is trashed by the Navy.
Those Navy guys.
Yeah.
It's seven o'clock at this time. I would like to call the July 10th, 2012 Planning Board Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda are minutes from June 12th, 19th, and 26th. Mr. Secretary?
We submitted the minutes out the last meeting. Everyone had a chance to look at them. I think that we had comments on one issue, and other than that, they were all approved. So I move we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments, or further comments, other than those already made? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. The minutes are accepted. Thank you. Approval not required.
Oh, excuse me. I just, it was news to me. I read in the paper today that the draft minutes are now going to be posted on the internet. So our procedures could change if that's the way it's going to be, that if our draft minutes are posted, then everyone just has to look at them and then immediately send their comments to me, and I'll make sure they get revised. So that's what I, I hope that's what's happening.
It said some of them.
Is that your understanding, Brian?
Let me find out precisely what the memo says, as we say. There are goods and bad things about posting draft minutes.
Yeah.
They're always available in the office. Let me find what's going on.
Well, with what I read in the enterprise, it says it's happening.
I think it's because some committees have chosen to adopt that.
Okay. So then I just wanted, do we have a choice in that? That was my question. Do we want to stay with our own procedures, or do we want to?
I think you probably have a choice.
Okay.
The open meeting law says you have to make them available within such a timeframe of your meeting. I think it's 10 days. Anyone who wants a copy of your minutes in any form, it's a public document, gets them immediately. So let me find out what the memo says.
Bring it up next.
And we can discuss it right through the next meeting. What you want to do as an elected board, I think you have a little bit more flexibility.
Melanie, are you aware of any of this?
No, Melanie is not involved, so that's be my responsibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim, for that. And Brian, if you can get back to us on that, that'd be great.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is an approval. Approval's not required. We don't have any of those, do we, Brian, tonight?
No, approval not required, please.
We don't have any?
Correct.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing continuation. We have information from our staff.
Okay. I'd ask the board for a motion to continue this public hearing until September the 11th, 2012, at 7:00 PM here in the town hall.
移到
Okay. Second. Okay. And then could you just give us an explanation on that, Brad?
Remember, this was referred to the Cape Cod Commission. The procedural glitch, and that we had actually already advertised your hearing for this before that referral was made. They have taken jurisdiction. So this is a procedural continuation to September. Until such time as we find exactly what it is the Cape Cod Commission and the applicant will be doing or not doing, we'll have some better information for you then. But for procedural purposes, you need to continue your hearing, which was opened, I believe, back in June or July.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Thank you. So I need a motion then to continue the hearing until September?
移到
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
September 11th.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. September 11th. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Thanks, Pat. The next item on the agenda is discussion, the Wind Energy System Draft Zoning Bylaw. We have a copy of that that we are working on.
Correct.
And if you mind mine, I'll be all set. As you know, we have discussed the first portion of it, and also held a public hearing on the first portion of it. And we are now going to start discussing the paragraph which begins with application requirements. And this is the performance standards that we're discussing at this turn. So everybody would refer to that portion of the bylaw, beginning with application requirements. I'm going to read it just for the benefit of the audience, TV audience and the audience that's here, and then we begin our discussion. The application requirements. This is in draft form. In addition to the requirements found in paragraph 301, 1 through 15, that's the part of our bylaw that deals with special permits, I believe. Isn't that?
It's actually your rules and regulations regarding special permits.
Right. Right.
It's not the bylaw.
Applications for special permit under this article shall include the following, unless a waiver is granted by the special permit granting authority, which is us. The applicant shall also submit such material that the special permit granting authority may reasonably require to review the application to determine compliance with the provisions of this article. The first bullet under this paragraph is mandatory pre-application meeting prior to submission of applications to the special permitting granting authority shall be reviewed by the planning department. The second bullet, names and addresses of property owners within the public outreach area as defined. So I'm going to stop there and ask if there's any comments or questions as far as that is concerned. Hearing none?
Actually, we will also be introducing in that paragraph other application requirements. We're working on a preliminary interconnect agreement. In other words, we would like to see upfront an interconnect agreement, at least at a preliminary stage, or an indication from the utility company that what they're proposing to do has a high chance of moving forward. Because we don't want you to be wasting your time reviewing these applications and going through the process when in fact, N-STAR or the utility company isn't going to be receptive to what it is they're proposing to do. So we are working on another bullet point in regards to some sort of preliminary statement from the utility company in regards to the interconnected group.
From the utility department. Okay. The next subparagraph is site plan details. All parcels and occupied structures within the public outreach area, they need to be on the site plan. All existing structures on the site property. Three, location of proposed turbine foundation and all appurtenances, ground equipment, transmission equipment, fencing, exterior lighting, et cetera. Four, distance between the foundation and property lines. Five, all overhead wires. Six, the extent of clearing necessary for installation. I'm going to stop there and ask if there are comments, questions, or additions for that portion.
Doug?
So they're going to be required to do a site plan, including other properties? That doesn't seem to be...
Yep.
Site plan including what other properties beyond their own?
You may not require a full land survey, but we want them to identify, just as we do on a locust map or a GIS level map, you know, the public outreach area and all occupied structures. On their site plan itself, for the property that they own or will be developing, you will want, you know, your rules and regulations regarding special permits, that's that 301.
Right.
Require, you know, land court level accuracy.
Right. On their own property.
On their own property.
For their other properties, we might use town existing records?
I think at that point, you would be reasonable to accept, you know, other plans that might be available, or GIS records, or assessor's records.
Okay.
And again, remember, the reason why I have up here in the first procedural paragraph, yes, you're required to do that unless you waive it. So if you have a small application, or they have information that's already available, you can use your discretion. And that's why we also have, if we miss something, we have a failsafe. We have a failsafe paragraph that, you know, you can ask for information reasonable to the application.
Pat?
At our last meeting, the word adjacent in one was removed, and I do think it should be removed because that limits it to just the adjacent parcels.
Mine is crossed out, so...
Correct. Adjacent should be crossed.
Mine was in the prior one, but it's not the one that was in our packet today.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I'm bringing it in.
If you're looking at a copy that has in the first item there all adjacent parcels, it should be all parcels. Further comments or questions on that portion of the draft? The next portion, engineering details. Tower and foundation plans. Only monotube designs are permitted for large wind energy systems, which means you can't have the lattice work type of structure. It's got to be tube. Wind energy system specifications, including the manufacturer and model, rotator diameter and tower height, actual power consumption over two years for principal uses on the lot, meteorological tower data for 12 months. Comments or questions on that portion? Pat?
And the way this is stated, it would indicate, the way I read it, that you have to have the tower there. And Paul brought up last time that sometimes that information is already known from other measurements in the area. That was correct, wasn't it, Paul?
Yes.
So you think that perhaps we don't...
Excuse me.
Perhaps we ought to say that that is necessary, however it is derived.
So which bullet are you referring to then?
That is the met tower data.
Oh, the met tower, oh, the last bullet. Okay. Brian?
That's why we have in your beginning paragraph, you know, your requirements unless you waive them. So someone might come in with some information that's comparable. You can waive the met tower data in favor of them. Or you may not want to. So it leaves you with that thought. That's why we have that categorical statement up front.
Okay.
That covers everything.
Perhaps a simple way of doing it, just say, represent met tower data.
I would just have met tower data unless you say whatever you submit to us is okay. In other words, it's an upfront requirement, because you may have a very large system all the way down to a very small system. But the applicant has the ability to petition you that the information they have is equal or better. And your discretion may waive that based on what you find in that particular application. Is the way I would go.
I'm hearing a little feedback, and I'm wondering if it's coming from that mic. No, I can hear myself. I can hear this, I can hear feedback when I speak. Is anybody else hearing that?
No, I'm hearing it generally, not only a particular person. It's a general person.
Okay. Frank, if you're, Frank, if you're out in the, in the control room, would you like to come out here and maybe help us with this?
I think this was loose because I just moved this.
Yeah, the feedback is gone now.
It's gone now?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it? Okay. All right. Well, let's try that.
I'm hearing a little bit myself. I'll catch them from, if you can come up here, take a look.
I think we might have just saw, might have been one mic, but I'll see.
It seemed to get better when I wiggled around.
No, I'm getting a little bit of backbeat.
Okay.
I'm trying to adjust.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But I'll give a call down there with the process.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
All right. So then are we finished with engineering details? Any other further comments on engineering details? The next subparagraph, operating details.
Just give me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We were talking about certification. Is that coming in during details? Specifications are one thing, but how about the certifications?
I'm sorry, Paul, what, you're...
Item two is wind energy system specifications.
Wind energy system specifications, including manufacturer and model, rotor diameter and tower height, and what else did you want?
Are we going to require certifications?
Yeah, we had talked about possibly...
Oh, certification.
Mentioning either the small wind energy, I forgot the name right now.
Yeah. Not yet. We wouldn't recommend that.
The certification would be, in other words, the written statement from the manufacturer certifying...
No, that this is the case. Is that what you mean? It would actually be, can I?
What?
I think it would actually be a third-party certification council type of independent rating.
Independent certification.
Rather than just the manufacturers. Because we talked about the fact that...
Is that your understanding of it, Brian? Of certification?
Yeah, I think you need to, you need to allow the applicant to submit their information. And if the board feels as though you need third-party corroboration, then you bring it in. But I wouldn't ask for it up front.
And that would be an option of ours, in other words?
Correct.
Okay. You okay with that, Paul?
When would you ask for it?
During the process, during the review. But you allow the applicant to come in with their story, their information, their application to you. And if you feel as though you need to have some kind of information corroborated, then you can then hire an expert, or they can hire an expert to give you a third-party opinion. And at this point in time, I think I would leave that in the review process, not in the application type of information.
Doug? But it seems like we're missing an opportunity to help them choose better equipment upfront because then we're going to be, they're going to have already made a lot of plans based on this equipment that may not be certified.
Right now, when we say certified, certified by who?
Well, I had recommended the one, the Small Wind Rating Energy Council.
I would not go with any one group's certification of any equipment. And I wouldn't advise this board to surrender any of your authority to approve equipment to a third party at this point, as part of the application process. It's information you may want to use to render a decision, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't utilize it at this point as a must-have until such time as you have a better handle on that. You allow someone to come in and make a case, state their reasoning for being in front of the board, their opinion as to why their equipment is great, it's going to be doing X, Y, Z, it's going to be able to produce so much power in such a fashion, and then you can examine their evidence. But right now, my advice to the board is you shouldn't be surrendering any of your authority to any third-party claims.
Doug?
I don't understand how it would be surrendering any authority. It's just recommending independent rated, better quality equipment. It's not that, not that we're going to have to say, oh, if it's certified, then we have to accept it.
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even go there in an application process, or a third-party, let me make a specific analogy. Radio equipment, radio towers. We wouldn't be out there saying, we prefer to see this type of equipment certified by whomever. You don't have a preference. You have, you're a blank tablet, and you're going to come in and listen to this person's evidence without any preconceptions about who might be rating it or certifying or whatnot. You may use that as part of your decision-making process, but you have to let the applicant get in the batter's box without any chilling effect with regards to what you may perceive as a preferred model. So I would just go with what you have today. And if they bring something in that's completely unknown to you, or you don't feel comfortable with, you can always ask a third-party rating system analyst or whatever to give you an opinion, whether it's these people or somebody else. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't have as part of your application.
But the chance is good that if it's either certified or not certified, I mean, I've only found the one agency in Massachusetts that provides the list of certified. Just saying, it seems like they're going to put a lot of investment to get ready and then find out they've chosen uncertified, and they didn't know about it. That's the only thing I'm thinking of. I guess I might be wrong.
Well, no, you're, no, I hear what you're saying. But I'm just saying that as a jury, you just, you want to see these people come in with what they believe is a machine that's going to produce this energy that meets your standards. And I really don't want to be telling them upfront, you prefer machines certified by any other group. Let them, let them make that determination on their own. They may say, oh, gee whiz, I think these folks, these machines are certified by these folks. That's, that's information we could put in front of the special permit granting authority to make our case. Don't you make the case for them.
Well, I guess I can accept that.
Unless it's an experimental model, they're going to have the certification. And they can provide that very easily. We're not asking them to go out and design a model specific for a facility and go out and certify it as an independent laboratory. It's not what they're asking for. If they have a standard turbine that seems to fit the site conditions that we're talking about, they most likely have a certification that they can provide as well as the specifications. Generally, that's what you provide them.
Same as, it would be no different than, we want some power equipment certified by underwriting laboratories. You want them to come in with their power equipment, let them make their case, and you might say to yourselves, well, we want underwriting laboratories, we want an opinion from whatever it might be. I would make it part of the review process. I wouldn't make it part of the upfront mandatory application, or even advisable application materials. Not yet. So let me see if I can come up to speed a little bit. At this point in time, I would recommend going to this.
They very well may come in and say, here, here's my wind turbine energy system, and it's certified. They might just say that, you know, right up front, and then we're home free. Whether or not it's required or not, I think it appears to me like it's sort of an open issue here, right, at this point? And since we're in a draft situation, maybe want to think about that a little bit more and come back and revisit it later. Pat?
Well, what I can do then is as an aside, maybe somewhere in their engineering details, we can have an aside, you know, parenthetically, certifications. Yeah. But I wouldn't make it a mandatory certified machine. Let them come in and make that case to you.
I hear what Brian is saying because throughout, whenever we do something, we don't tell somebody what kind of equipment to use. If, as Brian said, we're the jury. And so if we specify, well, you're going to be certified, and there's one agency in Massachusetts, we just don't do that as a board. It's outside of what we should be doing.
I'm not saying just only use that one. I'm just saying that's just one example.
I understand that. But there probably aren't going to be a whole lot more than one in Massachusetts that would be doing that.
And I hear what Doug is saying. But procedurally, probably not here. During your review, that's a perfectly legitimate question, has anyone, has any certification agencies anywhere on God's green are giving you the blessings? That's a perfectly legitimate question.
Okay. And we may get some comments about that particular issue.
Right. And I'll look into that some more, too.
For, at our hearing. Okay. I'd like to move on then to the next subparagraph, which is operating details. The responsible party, entity with legal responsibility for operations, emergency contact, and procedures.
And we are, we are working on the language. This language is a little awkward. Remember, it's just a draft, draft, draft. We are going to fix that up a little bit, so...
Yeah, that probably needs some...
But it gives you an idea that what is information. Again, this is at the information point, that they need to deliver to you as per their package.
Legal responsibility for operations and emergency contact procedures. The next part, noise modeling. To determine existing ambient and build conditions, including, there's some language there that's a little bit confusing, but it says, manufacturer's documentation of the sound levels generated under various wind conditions at given distances, measurements of ambient sound levels under typical daytime and nighttime conditions, the conditions under which the background sound levels were measured, as well as the frequency and duration of these measurements shall be specified. The town reserves the right to employ the services of their own acoustical expert at the expense of the applicant. Then flicker modeling.
Can I make a comment?
You want to stop on noise modeling?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay. I'm curious as to how detailed we can or should get in specifying how, when, where the modeling, the measurements will be taken. Some of the bylaws I've looked at go on for three pages with the specifications. Some are just very brief and would probably be easier to circumvent in how they're doing the measurement taking. And so I'd like to get a sense of everybody here how specific they want us to get in this document. I'm not saying I want us to decide tonight that you're going to take it at 2:00 AM, that sort of thing. But how specific do you think we should be? Is this an appropriate question, Brian?
There are various models out there. We've had it relatively generic. If you're not comfortable, it's why we're here.
Kim?
I would think, if it can be done, I'd like the modeling to be site-specific, at least adjusted for the topography and the immediate area they're going, and not taking in a model that works everywhere in the country. Generic's okay if you're so many feet away, this is it. We already know that, you know, our weather, there's many other things. So I'd like to see the model, whatever model they use, at least some adjustments were made to be for a specific site, and not just take a generic model and pop it in and guts, which will cover a lot of the things that you brought up.
Exactly, it will. That's the kind of response I was trying to ferret out here. Paul has a comment.
Yeah. I had put modeling for terrain under, on the next page, under clearing. So I'm understanding what you're saying. Okay, then I'll... And any other comments?
Yes, Paul?
One of the issues with noise modeling is seasonal variations too. If you do it in February, it's quite different than August. So it's only nighttime, it's a seasonal variation. There are studies that say when you see the turbines, you're more affected when you don't see the turbines, things of that nature. But clearly, the foliage has an impact on the noise and the other conditions on that.
Well, the wind conditions vary seasonally.
Yes, all right.
With the choppiness effect.
Add seasonal variations. Okay, other comments before we go on to flicker? Yep, Pat?
Just curious, because I'm scanning it, and I probably looked at it and read right over it, but I know comments we got were that we have to look more for, instead of just distances, we have to look for engineering performance. And so I'm wondering if we're going to do that, and noise is one of the critical complaints here, if not the critical complaint. Are we going to anywhere in here specify shall not exceed and give more definition than the state standard of 10 dB A above ambient? Does anybody feel we should be doing that or not?
I think if the state standards were actually held, held up, we might not have problems. I think that they've been exceeded, and we've only seen a couple of actual tests because the testing seems to be so hard to get done because there's so many issues that come up. So I think with more testing, we might find that more excesses were there to be found. So I would say the state.
I'm just asking this because I think it's part of this discussion that needs to be done.
My first impression would be that the state has probably got the right numbers, but we just didn't actually, we don't have the right setup to meet those numbers. It could be more, we could go a little stronger, I suppose.
Well, the question comes up when you're dealing with this is what kind of a community, I'm going generic here more, what kind of a community do we want to be? Right now, we've got a 40 dB A noise limit for various things. And we know that the background noise exceeds that when they were doing the measurements during the day, I believe, and even at night. So if we have greater than a 40 dB A background, are we not being truthful in our bylaws? Do, how do we want to handle this? Because do we want to be a quieter community? Or do we want to encourage, what are they called, cigar cigarette boats out on the sound that drive me crazy as they go racing around?
Motorcycles.
Motorcycles, yeah, okay. I mean, the craziness with those things only lasts for a certain amount of time. But do we want to specify a noise level that we really don't want to have exceeded? Because every time you add something to the background noise, it increases the ambient level. Where are we going to draw a line for ambient? Before 28 became a four-lane highway, and before we had the amount of traffic we currently have, ambient is considerably different. Woods Hole Road in the summer, and I'll tell you last week, is way different than it is in the winter. So how are we going to handle this?
Doug?
We really need a comprehensive noise bylaw. We don't really have in place either.
But isn't that going to be, isn't that going to be something that the health department is going to deal with? Aren't they dealing with noise?
I don't know. I think they're more into the health effects of various things.
Of noise.
But the noise as a nuisance, a noise nuisance bylaw would probably come from us.
That is ours.
Maybe we could just turn it out and then refer to it.
So what do you, you want to ask the staff to do something here?
Well, what I quickly looked up, you remember, Bob, I think you've got a copy of it, I don't know about Jim, the Minnesota study, which was put out in 2009. And I quickly looked that up. And they recognize infrasound, and they recognize that that's probably what is upsetting people. And what they're looking at is when you go to 40, 45 dB A, up to 25% of the people are then annoyed. I'll use the term annoyed rather than a nuisance factor here. Sleep interruption, when it's greater than 45 dB A occurs. So I'm just pulling this out of the Minnesota study. Let's see, that was on page 17 in here. And that study incorporated an awful lot of the literature that we have seen with the literature surveys from the state. I think all of that was probably in there. It incorporated, Dr. McCunney gave the talk at the Voc Tech School, and he's a noise expert. He and four other people at the behest of the Canadian and the American Wind Energy Group commissioned them to do a worldwide literature survey. And they didn't find a lot of health effects. But we're dealing with limited studies, as you saw from our own state study. They keep citing the same four, five, or six studies over and over again. So what do we want to do here? How do we want to set that? This, I'm thinking, is a very big question. And there are other ways that we could handle this. We could say, okay, people aren't really terribly annoyed during the daytime because the noise levels increase. And in the summer, the noise levels around here increased tremendously. What we were hearing, when we, those of us who went to the Board of Health meeting or watched it on television, what we were hearing is that it is a sleep disturbance that creates so much of the trouble, so many of the health effects. A lot of that, my understanding is, can be directly a result of lack of sleep, the symptomology that was described. And I don't know about the rest of you, but when I don't get my sleep, I'm nasty. So, you know, I think we're, we can handle it in a different way. We can handle it similarly to what is being done with the wind turbines now. We could say, okay, from the hours of, whatever it is, they're doing 7:00 p.m. Maybe we want to do 10:00 p.m. or something like that to 7:00 a.m. or 6:00 a.m. The turbines, if they provide more than X, will be shut off. That's another way of handling it so that people can get their sleep. Or we can specify a certain dB A level, as we currently have in our bylaws, which may not be realistic. But my concern is every time we add something new, we increase the ambient background. Do we want to be a city in noise? And that's a huge question I think we have to look at when we're deciding on this issue here.
Other comments?
I got one.
Doug?
So I think that would be a nice thought, that you could let it run faster in the daytime and keep it quieter at night. But I don't know if that would really be practical. Because now, I mean, the town is trying to be responsible steward, but these are going to be independently run by individuals who might be less inclined to be so careful with the adjustments. I think we should only permit them for the maximum amount of noise that they're going to make at full speed, not bothering anyone. And we don't have to worry about whether or not they're following our rules. Just like if we put a no-left-turn sign and people are turning left anyway, we can't control it after it's up. But it's a good thought, but I don't think it's going to work.
I'm just putting out assumptions. And if we say, okay, we're going to permit it based upon maximum speed, running at 100% in the worst wind conditions, and you've got to maintain this sound level, that might cut out all turbines in the future, as we know them, turbines as we know them.
Well, I don't know. I hope that's not the case, but I think we have to take that chance and plan it that way.
You've got, Jim?
I think we need to deal with noise separately. I think it's important to have a part of this bylaw say it doesn't exceed the town standards or noise bylaw, but we might need to revisit that because I don't want to create a special noise permit level for wind turbines. I think it needs to be the same for everybody across the town. And we should have in it that the permits do not violate our noise bylaws, and then make sure our noise bylaws are updated and working properly. Because, you know, we do have problems with motorcycles, cigarette boats, the other things have all been brought up. And I think we've got to deal with noise separately and then tie the two together, just like we say it has to conform with other bylaws, you know what I mean? So I don't want to make a special noise component of the wind turbine bylaw. I think it should be town in general.
I agree.
That sounds good to me, but I mean, other comments?
If that'll work, that's an idea.
What is the status of our noise bylaw at this point? I'm trying to recall. What do we have in place right now?
I think it's limited in scope and not very descriptive.
Do we have any, do we have anything like that?
You have a general nuisance clause, or this is a zoning bylaw. And you have a general nuisance clause in there that you can't have, be objectionable or excessive. There are no numeric thresholds. It's up to the building commission to determine whether or not your coffee maker in Woods Hole is objectionable because of the smells, or it's up to the building commission to determine whatever it is, your lathe, your saw, whatever it is, is buzzing too loud at night and being objectionable to nearby residences across the lane. So there are no delimitations in the bylaw today because there's such a wide variety of uses out there that you couldn't really put one number. In this instance, however, you have a land use that you are regulating and that you may have a performance standard for, no different than if, in fact, we had a coal-fired power plant, and we said the emissions from your stack cannot exceed 15 parts per million of sulfur dioxide on any given debt. So I think you have that authority here to regulate this particular land use with its particular effects, irregardless of what other bylaws or other competent jurisdictions are saying. See what I'm saying? So I would focus, I guess we've jumped ahead of here a few sections. If you want to start talking about specific performance standards, we have those further on the bylaw, and we can talk about that a little more. But you have that authority, and I wouldn't cumber yourselves with what, I would have it here, not somewhere else in the bylaw, because you have to be fairly specific. Whereas the general nuisance clause is just that, the general nuisance clause.
Bob?
I really do think we need something very specific here. Because if we're telling people that your equipment has to meet these standards, they have to meet those standards, otherwise it becomes, hey, the guy with the cigarette boats off, they get caught. They're still making the noise. But you've got to catch them, and I don't want to set us up in a situation where we've got to have the windmill noise police running around and trying to nail people for making too much noise. It should be in the bylaw, and they should be able to prove that it meets those standards.
So we have some order of difference of opinion there. Pat?
That's also a reason to bring up operational hours. If we want to ensure that our residents can get a good night's sleep. We were looking at that when we looked at the Tavora Stone Yard, when people in the neighborhood were complaining that they couldn't sleep. They were awakened way too early in the morning. And we've done this before. We've regulated hours of operation for the benefit of the peace of the neighborhood. And again, there are different ways of doing that with sound mitigation here. You can cut it off at night so people can sleep. You can say, okay, it will not go over 40 dB A at night. But you have to be aware that the World Health Organization said you need 30 to get a good night's sleep when we're saying it can't go over 40. And I'm dealing purely with sleep because rest is a necessary function of the human body to be able to deal with the world, to be healthy. So part of what we have to do as a planning board is to protect the population of this area from unwanted types of noise development, uses, whatever. And I think this is one of the more serious parts of this bylaw that we have to deal with.
Everyone?
Why don't we, everyone's throwing, why don't we, for now, throw out 40 and bring in testimony to see if that number should go up or down, just to move forward?
Just to put a placemaker.
Yeah, just to place, and so this is, we're not deciding for, we're laying 40 out there, bring people in. If they disagree with us.
Forty is the ambient or?
Yeah, total, the total.
That's interesting, you read the World Health Organization says above 30 dB is disruptive to see.
Inside, which means it can't be more than about 40 outside. But there are other things, obviously, that go into a good night's sleep. It's not just the decibels that can be the amplitude modulation too that wakes people up because people have different sensitivities.
And the vibrations from the embers.
Absolutely. Distance is a solution to most of these problems that we're looking at here.
All right, I'd like to move on. I think we've discussed that thoroughly, and we seem to think that we should add something about seasonal variations, a minimum ambient level, 40 dB A for total, and hours of operation. I think I have.
We're kind of jumping ahead a little bit here, but this is, you were talking some performance standards. I'll plug them in a little further into the bylaw, but not at this paragraph, we stopped.
Okay.
Right now, you're looking for some site-specific information as part of the modeling process, for example, topography, and you want a seasonal, you want the modeling to take into consideration the seasonality of the area. Now, again, this is the information package that comes to you. And then now you're getting into your procedure for reviews and your performance standards. Now is the time really to start talking about, some of the things we were just talking about. How are you going to take this information package that the applicant has popped on your desk and has made a presentation to you? Now, here are some procedural questions and then some performance standards, is the next page.
Okay, so I'm not saying necessarily they belong here. I'm saying that those are the issues that we brought up under this paragraph.
We stopped.
And they might belong someplace else.
But they really belong someplace.
Right, okay. All right, the last item under this sub-topic is flicker modeling. Identification of all properties potentially impacted, together with the methods used for measuring flicker with mitigation circum, excuse me, mitigation procedures. Yeah, Paul?
Noise modeling is a pretty sophisticated process, but it's pretty well-developed to find. Is there a similar approach on flicker modeling? Or there's an agreed standard on what modeling is to be done? It seems to me it's awful site-specific. How do I come up with a standard modeling procedure for such a site-specific issue?
I'm no expert in it, but those I've talked to say, yes, it can be done. It's a lot of geometry and angles of the sun and the height of the turbine. But once you know those certain parameters, you can do a pretty quick model based on the height of the, from July to, you know, from June 20th to December 20th, you can figure out exactly where this shadow is going to fall and when. That's why we want all those adjacent parcels to find out just where these shadows fall and when. And if they're there, what are you going to do with them? And they have to demonstrate to you that there's no flicker, or if there is, they will take care of it.
Is it a period of time that flicker becomes a problem? I've been near turbines, and maybe it was 10 minutes. Is that adequate? Is that appropriate? I've driven up 28 in the wintertime, and the flicker was pretty annoying just driving up the highway. So it's pretty site-specific, and there is a timing element. So it's pretty site-specific and there is a timing element to that, too.
Correct.
I'm not sure how you, you do the modeling. I haven't seen the modeling for flicker.
You don't have to worry about that. You are telling these folks that you want them to identify these impacted areas, the methods for measuring it shows how you did it, and if there is issues, how are you going to take care of it? If there are no issues, you have the ability to have a third party look at this information. But again, you want, you wanted to tell them what you want. You don't want to tell them how to do it. Let them come in and say, here's how we did it. And none of us here are expert enough to know, and we don't want to become experts. We will hire an expert that says, okay, fine. Or, yeah, you need some additional information. You just want them to come in with this flicker analysis, flicker modeling, whatever it might be, and demonstrate to the satisfaction of this board that it's been done correctly and that if there are issues, they have been mitigated. Or if there are no issues, you can make it a condition, certain conditions of approval or, you know, a third-party peer review might be in order. They say, everything's fine, then you can send it out to your expert.
I agree you don't have to tell them how to do it, but you have to set the criteria that you want them to model.
I wouldn't even do that. Just like noise modeling, you may set some broad parameters. Let them come in to show you their information. When you start getting really specific, then they'll come in with exactly that and they'll say, that's exactly what you asked me for. So you need to, I realize it's a balancing act, but you have to be careful sometimes with what you ask. So let, let it be relatively generic, not wholly specific as to, you know, we want you to use, we want you to use technical release 55 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to determine your runoff from your site. And we did that for years. Technical release 55 in your regulations, which then became technical release 62 and 62A and 65A. We should just show us your calculations to determine the rate of runoff from your facility. If you want to use technical release 55 or the rational method or whatever it is, our professional engineer will review it and determine whether or not it's on. We'll let them determine what they're going to use.
Yeah, Doug?
So then are you saying that they'll come in and say, our turbine will produce flicker on house at 28, whatever way, for 30 minutes at a time or whatever it'll be, and then we'll decide if that's acceptable?
You have a performance standard later on in your bylaw that will determine whether that's acceptable. If it's not acceptable, then you're going to have to turn your turbine off during those time periods. But let me, I think it's in there somewhere.
Yeah, it says, no more than 30 minutes per day and not to exceed 10 hours per day at the property.
Is it, is there?
Yeah.
It's under safety and environmental standards.
All right, so I'm going on to the next, the next paragraph, which is entitled Procedure for Review. In addition to the requirements found in paragraph 301, 1 through 8, which is, those are the requirements for generically speaking, special permits. Applications for a special permit under this article shall be subject to the following procedural requirements. Applications for small wind energy systems shall be subject to these requirements at the discretion of the special granting authority. We define small wind energy systems as less than?
Sixty.
300 watts, was it?
Sixty.
Less than 60.
What was it?
60 kilowatts.
60 kilowatts.
Ten watts.
Oh, I see, okay, right, 60 kilo, oh, it's point three, between, between point three and 60 kilowatts, okay. All right.
Now, before we get into the first bullet point, Ralph.
I'm sorry?
Before we get into this first bullet point with regards to parties and interest and notifying people in the outreach area, we've kind of been giving out some thought and talk here that right now we're, we're saying that we want you, the public outreach area is four times, it's the system height, which is four times the.
All right.
I'm sorry, it's the tip of the blade plus 10%, I think it is. We're thinking that that might really, to use that measure with regards to the public outreach area might be problematic because of the way things work with the assessor's office and whatnot. We're thinking now to advise the board to simply use a standard number, what that number is. Right now, it's 300 feet for your parties of interest. So we're thinking you may want to use 1,000 feet or use a specific number, whatever it might be. If someone comes in with a very small system, you can waive that down to what you might think is more appropriate. You may just say the 300 feet by the 60 kilowatt. So I asked the board to think about that again. Right now, we were going to use a rate, you know, the bigger the, the bigger the wind energy system, the bigger the outreach area. But we're finding that there are some practical difficulties in doing that, just in administration of the bylaw and the generation of a butters list. So right now, I think in, I think maybe 1,000 feet and you can wave it down to.
We're small, 1,000 feet?
We're thinking 1,000 feet is a number for everybody. The 300 feet is your parties of interest, that's the, that's the state law. And the public outreach area would be 300 feet to 1,000 feet. If you come with a very small system, you can wave that back down over to 300 feet. You can't go below 300 feet. You could have a.
But this would be substantially less than three times the height on a larger tower, though.
Well, right now, we're saying 1,000, you may even say 1,500.
I was just.
Right. We were throwing a number out there for practical, for practicalities, for one number. Right now, we're thinking a standard, a standard number from 300 to 1,200 feet or 1,500 feet, whatever the board is comfortable with, and then you can wave that down to 300 feet based on the size of the turbine.
So you're asking us to reconsider the definition of public outreach area, which is something that we.
Right.
Considered earlier. Everybody think about that, okay?
Right. And it's just one of those, just one of those issues that it might make a lot of sense to have a number.
Okay.
Just like the board waived subdivision rules and regulations, you have to have a 300-foot centerline offset, whether you have a two-lot subdivision or a 200-lot subdivision, you need a 300-foot centerline offset. But you wave that down based on the size of the subdivision, and that's the thinking here again. So just revisit, think about that, revisit that, think of a number that the board is comfortable with.
All right. Okay. All right, so then now we will go ahead to the first bullet, which is, as stated, with the exception of those property owners identified as parties of interest. And how is that defined?
That's your 300-foot.
That's not under our definitions, is it?
You don't have to, it's in the state law.
I'm sorry?
You don't have to, it's in the state law.
I know, but for general.
And it's in the, it's in your special permit section of your local zoning bylaw.
Party of interest, okay. The special permit granting authority shall by regular mail alert property owners within the public outreach area of the time, place, and date of the required public hearing for the wind energy system. The purpose of this outreach effort is to broaden the base of information gathering beyond that typically required of other special permit applications while not conferring party in interest status beyond that defined by the special general law.
Section 11, chapter 48, general.
All right. Okay, comments on that paragraph?
That's a good, good add-on that addresses Rich's concern.
Right.
Say again?
Oh, I said that's a good add-on at the end there, that they're not conferring party in interest status beyond as defined by the state law.
Oh, okay. All right. I believe that happened while I was gone. Okay, the next, the next paragraph, hearing no comments on that. Criteria for Review. Applications shall be subject to these performance requirements, except that applications for small wind energy systems shall be at the discretion of the special permitting granting authority. Here we get specific, so we'll take them one at a time. Height to be determined by the special permitting granting authority based on industry standards and is the minimum necessary for adequate operation of the wind energy system. So that's pretty generic and leaving it open to industry standards. I have, I have an issue with industry standards because I don't know if there are any and it seems like a different, a different manufacturers might have different standards. I don't know if there's, if there are industry standards.
Well, it would be for that particular wind energy system.
Well, they, if I could, they have standards such as you wouldn't want to recommend one that's not at least 50 feet above the tree line. They have standards like that so that they know the thing is going to function well.
Are they all, are they consistent? Are all the manufacturers consistent with that?
I don't know about that, but I know that.
Well, that's what industry means, though.
Just saying that's an example of industry standard of, you know, like for the things to perform, they have their standards that they require for a site.
I, I'm just saying that industry standards, I'm, my guess is that they vary quite a bit, but I don't know.
I guess so, too.
You know, so when you say, when you say to be determined and based upon industry standards, what are we doing? We juggling a bunch of balls here? I just, I'm not just all that comfortable with, with the word, with the words industry standards.
We'll go back and tighten it up a little bit, then I've got it noted.
Okay, so just going to put a little question mark there. Other comments about industry standards, Paul?
Well, following phrase I was, sorry, the minimum necessary for adequate operation of the wind system. Height determines the power generated exponentially, so the higher it is, the more power you get. So by saying minimum necessary for adequate operation doesn't really decide anything because it depends on what you're going to produce if you set the height. So I'm not sure the terminology makes a lot of sense in that case. Maybe we need to just change the phraseology a bit.
In other words, if in fact I have a 60-kilowatt turbine, then the height has to be Y according to some variation of acceptable industry standard or comparable example. Just want to make sure I understand. It's the, it's the word minimum that's the issue here or, or what is necessary for the adequate operation?
I'm sure, and what adequate, what adequate means in that case.
Right, so to adequate, okay. In other words, to reach.
I think it could be.
The nameplate capacity or something, but adequate is uncomfortable.
Okay. Minimum necessary to achieve the performance at the end is what you're really talking about.
The maximum performance.
A good operational, that's such a nebulous phrase, it makes me uncomfortable.
Then we will go back and look at that.
Okay, Doug?
And I'm curious, I'm not sure I understand the wording either. The height is to be determined by the special permit granting authority? I don't think that makes sense. They're going to determine the height that's required for their unit to function and then they're going to bring it to us and we're going to say.
Okay.
Sorry, but that's too tall for this neighborhood or something like that. I see.
Right. Remember, go back to purpose.
Yeah, Bob?
Well, I think the height should be based on the manufacturer's specifications for the maximum output of the unit that they're installing. And then setbacks are going to determine if that's going to, that height is going to be curtailed or, or extended either. So we do have a fail-safe there, I believe, with that next item.
Setback?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if the manufacturer says this needs to be 70 feet tall, but the setback requirement isn't met by that 70-foot tower, then that's, that negates it. Yeah, it's not going to work.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to take another look at the definite.
So I'll go back and instead of industry standard, many manufacturers' standards, you would like some different examples, and adequate operation is uncomfortable. So we'll go back to some sort of rated capacity, performance is rated capacity.
But at all times, we won't be conceding 240-1, which is the purpose of our zoning bylaw, that first paragraph.
Always go back to that.
We always go back to that.
Always go home.
We never concede that for, in order to perform at some standard, this is the only way we could do it, and then we basically just throw away.
Which is why we took a long time upfront.
Right.
This is what we're doing.
So we're always going to come back to that, every time. So uncomfortable with that.
Next, next subparagraph is setbacks. Safety setback, and this is for safety only now, from the property lines shall be no less than the system height plus 10%. Comments? Pat?
I'd like to know how we're defining safety. We could be defining it as collapse, fall down of the tower. We could be defining it as ice throw. We could be defining it as the type of flicker that Paul had experienced on 28 and so did I, which has greatly disturbed motorists if you're suddenly there where you've got this horrendous black flicker. So I think we need to say, first of all, what are we looking at for safety? And then does the height plus 10% really accomplish what we need for safety?
To me, safety, safety is potentially injurious to a person's health, you know, and whether it's physical health or mental health or whatever it is, but I mean, it's safety is dealing with a person's.
We can be a little more specific, you know, or is it's for ice throw, blade throw? These things could be on fault down.
Right.
But it's those types of calamity issues, not so much flicker issues.
And 10% of the total height of the tower may not be sufficient. I have not read, I can't quote anything here right now, but I don't know how far ice throw may occur. I don't know, we've had a couple of instances here on the island of, of Parkers, oh, here I think it was, of blade throw. I don't know how far those blades went.
We have, we have that information. We'll make sure the board's aware.
Okay.
Other comments about that, safety? I had penciled in ice throw per manufacturer specs. That's, that's what I had put in there. But I would add ice and blade throw per manufacturer specs, specifications.
This, the size plus 10% seems to me like just a fall zone.
That's what I'm thinking, too. That's why I needed to have safety defined. What are we really looking at here for safety issues?
Okay, the next, the next subitem there is noise setback. Shall be determined by the special permit and granting authority from noise model results and must not exceed 10 decibels over ambient sound levels at the property line. Comments on that? Did everybody get that in order to maintain being crossed out? And substituted in there was and must not exceed?
I didn't get that.
Okay, so cross out in order to maintain and add and must not exceed. Comments and questions? I had penciled in here infrasound and parentheses nuisance, and I don't know what setbacks are. And I don't know what setbacks are found about infrasound.
Right now, we're dealing with sound we can hear.
I'm sorry?
Right now, we're dealing with sound we can hear.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
So let's just start there. We'll get into those other issues later.
But, okay, we need to deal with infrasound somewhere. Okay. Pat?
Yeah, if we're putting in can't exceed 40 dB A just to gather comments on it, this is potentially in opposition of... So we're going to have two parts of this draft that aren't the same necessarily. If we say it can't exceed 10 dB A over ambient sound, but we're saying it can't exceed 40 dB A, they're not the same. And I don't know what we want to do. Just leave it this way and say, we're doing this for purposes of discussion.
If it can't be over 40 dB A, don't even have a bylaw. Just don't have it. Is my recommendation, because you're doing a born thing, you know, they've got this thing. 40 dB A is sometimes ambient. So I think you need to think about that.
Well, that's why when Jim said, "Let's just put it in as a marker."
What is it? I just picked 40 dB A because it's been thrown around.
Yeah, I think right now, if you want to, let's go out with this state standard for what you can hear. Get some comments on that and go from there. There are others who say, you know, it'd be hard for us to do the world health thing, 30 dB A in the building. We can't go in someone's house and measure that.
We're saying at the property line, right?
So we say, okay, if you maintain 10, the state standard at the property line, you're probably going to be okay inside the house.
I think that's what we're talking about, right at the property line.
Right, at the property line. So not, I might have a house that's 1,200 feet from the property line or 120 feet from the property line. We're saying maintain it, not at the house, not at your property, we're saying you maintain it at your property.
Yes. Because I brought this up when we first started talking about it because you may own land next to one of these things, and you have a right to build a house within 20-foot setback anywhere on your property. And you don't want a user to come up and usurp the right of your property because they're already there. That's why I said it should be at the property line so that the abuser's property values are protected.
That's why it's there.
Is it the wind turbine, the owner's property line?
That's where the measurement should take place. Because if they're not bothering anybody to put their noise on their own land, if it goes onto a neighbor's land, that's a nuisance.
Okay. All right. So when you get, the only comment there was mine, and infrasound belongs somewhere else.
All right, we'll have to have a discussion on noise we can't hear, and there aren't a lot of standards out there, we're still working on that. Took the easy thing, noise we can hear. But we're, not to be flip, we're still looking into that.
Okay. The next sub-item here is called clearing. To be determined, that's clearing vegetation, I guess, and maybe even a hill or something, I don't know. To be determined by the special permitting granting authority based on site plan information. Temporary construction staging areas shall be revegetated. Comments on that paragraph? Okay, this is where I had penciled in modeling for terrain desirable. Paul brought up, I think, earlier modeling for terrain, and this is where I put it in. And I don't know if that's where it belongs, but it seemed to me that it was possibly could go there. So I don't know what anybody thinks about that, but...
I'll find the right spot. I understand the board looking for size specificity, and I'll find the right spot for you.
Okay. The next sub-paragraph item is called design standards. Here we're getting in rather specific. Color and finish shall be white or gray and non-reflective. Lighting, the wind energy systems may not externally, be externally illuminated except as may be required for emergency. Navigation, that was mostly for air navigation, or security purposes. Signs, other than for emergency information purposes, are prohibited. A signs, the word A in signs there at the end of that sentence is to be crossed out. The next line, utility connections shall be underground.
We'll delete the word "duh."
What's the D?
All right, I'll take credit for that.
And now we have other... Now, are there any comments or questions about that particular area of the bylaw called design standards? Anybody have anything that they want to add or anything? Okay, I found one example in another bylaw that I looked at. And on the line that says signs, I put in, other than for emergency information, and I said, "Or education." And what's referred to there is people who would walk up to these units, if they could get close enough, or even at a sign on the fence, might educate them as to who owns the unit, what it produces, you know, that kind of thing. So you could have, you might want to include a sign that has something to do with education about the unit that is there. And then the other one that I found was that no advertising would be allowed. And when you say, well, no signs, signs are prohibited, there are other ways to advertise. You could have a flag up there, or you could have a loudspeaker advertising something that would be there. So it was sort of a catch-all. I just noted that that was in another bylaw, that no advertising was allowed. So those are things we might want to consider. Nobody else had anything, I don't believe. Jim?
Well, just, they should comply with all the other sign laws and the design review committee on signage that we already have. They should stay within those standards.
I'm sure that...
Number of signs, the size, that's all spelled out.
Yeah, number of signs and size, but it doesn't say what it's about.
If they choose to have an educational sign, it has to be the right size.
I understand, right. But this said no, no signs, other than for emergency.
Well, I guess they could have a standard business sign that everybody else gets.
Right, whatever. Well, that's why I put it in there. Okay. We move on to the next subset here. Safety and environmental standards. Emergency services to be coordinated with the Falmouth Fire and Rescue and approved by the special permitting granting authority. Unauthorized access. Turbine area should be fenced to preclude unauthorized access. Shadow flicker. Demonstrate no more than 30 minutes per day, not to exceed 10 hours per year at the property line. Comments or questions? Hearing none, I had two that I pulled up from other examples that I reviewed. No hazmat is allowed on the site. And also no electromagnetic interference to be generated. So that the wind turbine couldn't be interfering with radio or television or other internet-type of interference. So I suggested that those two be added, and they're just suggestions. Pat?
Okay, this is something I don't know about, but I have read because one of the complaints is that certain oils and so forth have to be kept on the site. And I don't know whether those are in sufficient quantity to be considered hazardous.
Well, I don't think they have to be kept on the site, but they might be involved in, you know, in lubricating the machinery at the time. But the hazardous, if it's considered hazardous material, it could be stored somewhere else, and when they service the unit, they bring it.
It could. I think from what I've read, the concern is that it is generally stored there. Don't ask me why, but I'm just bringing that up. And I like the idea of no hazardous materials stored.
They'd probably use a lot of hydraulic fluid or lubricant.
Yeah.
Probably has a need for a lot of it, so they probably do prefer to store it on site.
Well, there's a certain amount of danger also, spillage, if you constantly have to transport it. I know nothing about how often that has to be changed, used, whatever.
Anybody else have some comments on hazardous material?
I really don't think it would be that big of an issue. I mean, think about all the hazardous materials people have in their garages.
How about no excess hazardous material?
Well...
Well, maybe we'll leave it up to the fire department to...
Yeah.
Because there are ways of storing it that is not going to get out.
There's proper containers and ways, and the fire department has rules for all that, so we should leave it to that.
So maybe that should be mentioned in here positively then.
It probably should be kept within the storage area in the base of it or something.
Okay, hazardous materials stored.
Shall be properly stored and contained.
According to the Falmouth Fire Department?
Fire Department, yeah.
Okay, so then you don't say no, you just say hazardous material on sites stored properly. Okay. Any other comments on safety and environmental standards? Brian?
No, we'll put some language similar to the coordinate your emergency services, including hazmat response with the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department.
Okay.
The rest of the, I'm sorry, that's my only comment here. The rest of the bylaw, page five, really is, we're redoing that in much more detail for your next meeting, so if you want to stop here, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay.
Pages three and four, we're going two at a time, it looks like.
Okay.
So we'll work on this some more, and you'll get pages five and six. Probably some time early next week for discussion. Along with all the changes and additions you want.
Okay. Any comments or suggestions for Brian and the rest of the staff when they consider the rest of the things? I have, Pat?
Yep.
Something that I have seen in several of the bylaws is that they require a property value warranty to be given to the potential properties being affected. I sort of feel uncomfortable about it, but I'm bringing it up because it is in a number of the bylaws. And one of the things that we have heard complaints about is the decreased valuation of property. So I'm bringing it up, I don't know whether we want to put it in here.
241 addresses that.
I don't think that would survive.
I think 241 talks to that point. It talks about preserving property values. I mean, that's a pretty strong paragraph.
Right, I, you know, I think you would do it with your decision. You wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't think the AG would approve of... You could try, you could try, but, you know.
If we do this right, maybe we won't impact property damage.
Well, that's the hope.
Right.
It's just that a review, I think when we're looking at this, if we're doing a review of potential of the bylaws, as Brian said, we don't want to remake the wheel if we're looking at things. And we say, yeah, we like it, or nah, we don't want it. And so I brought that up because it is in several of them, and such warranties can be extensive.
We also want to get it approved by the committee and the AG.
Right. I'm not suggesting I like the idea.
I had the suggestion, Brian, that I didn't see included in the rest of the, and that was something to do with decommissioning. I didn't see...
Oh, we're working on it.
All right. Good work.
That comes out of the financials, sure.
Nice job, Brian, with this and planning board. Good input here for moving the process forward. The next item on the agenda are committee reports. I asked, you may know that I'm on the charter review committee, which has no direct... I mean, I wasn't appointed by this board to be on the charter review committee, but there is a section in the charter that deals with planning board. And you may not be familiar with it, but you probably should be. And I'm going to give you what my input to the charter review committee is concerning the planning board section. And I would entertain comments from you and also suggestions. There's one part of the charter that deals with a master plan. And what that is, is considered to be our local comprehensive plan. So I ask the charter review committee, well, under definitions of the charter, we will be adding a definition that says the master plan is equal to the local comprehensive plan, rather than changing the wording in the charter itself. I think that makes sense. And also, because we have become the local comprehensive planning committee, and that there is no, the planning board is now that committee, it was necessary to remove a paragraph that says these inclusion, changes or portions developed by the, by other committees must receive the vote and approval by the planning board. So that's no longer necessary because we are the planning committee, so that's just a deletion. Then, there's a section in the charter that deals with specifically some things that are pertinent to other organizations that are elected in town. And also that are appointed, appointed boards. And it reads as such, organize annually, elect necessary officers, establish a quorum, adopt rules and procedures and voting, maintain minutes and attendance and copies of which will be given to the town clerk. Well, I objected to the charter singling out the planning board to do that because it's required by all of the, not only appointed boards, but elected boards. So I've asked the charter review committee if we could drop that from the portion that's in, it's in the planning board section and add it to a section that would apply to all of the planning boards, all the elected boards, and the appointed boards. And so we're working on that, on that language. And it will be probably dropped from the planning board section, but incorporated in another section of the charter that deals with more than just the planning board. So it's sort of a, it's a change, but it doesn't change the way we're going to operate. It's just not singling us out as being the only ones required to do that. And that's basically what I wanted to bring to your attention. As far as what's going on with the, and I think, I would ask if you have any comments about that. And also, you may want to look it up on the Internet, the charter is on the Internet, and take a look at section C46, which is entitled Planning Board. And it's, you're probably familiar with... And it's, you're probably familiar with 95% of it, just because, even if you haven't read it specifically, because that's the way we operate. So, does anyone have any questions or, or if you want, if you have some, you could give them to me at the next meeting? Yes, Bob?
Not a question on that.
Oh, okay. You, oh, and then you want committee reports or the Charter Review? Do you have another committee report?
I, I have not necessarily a specific committee, but an item that has come up in two committees that I sit on, and I'm not sure whether this is the time to bring it up or whether it should come up under new business.
Well, we don't have, new business would be something at the next, or next, at another meeting, the next subsequent meeting. It's not listed here under committee reports. But that's not to say that I think we couldn't entertain more than one committee report. We did list a speci, one specific report, so I don't have any problem with, you, go ahead.
One of the things that keeps coming up is transportation and public transportation and the lack of a transformation, a transportation committee now. And I think maybe we need to get that ball rolling again and do something because it does, Pat and Jim, it comes up all the time.
All the time.
All the time. And we don't seem to be doing anything about it. And it seems to be a vital piece to the puzzle of keeping this town viable and keeping the tourists coming. So there's a lot to it and it's a shame that that committee is dissolved, I believe.
Well, there's still one or two members, but they, they don't have a quorum, so...
They don't have a quorum, so...
It, it is an appointed, it is an appointed committee by the selectmen. So really, what we could do is, what we could do as a planning board is to send a memo to the selectmen saying that we feel it's vital to, that it be re-instituted and, and, you know, they, they solicit people. If you want to, as a subcommittee, do you want to do that or do you want me to, to ask the staff to draft the, up the letter and I'll sign it, or what do you want to do?
Whatever the...
It sounds easy. I'm sorry?
That sounds easy.
It's easy if, how do you, how do you all feel about that?
Let's have the staff draw, drop a letter and you sign it. That sounds good.
Okay, and that's, that's...
We're getting it next week for you to take a look at.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, so that's good. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait, one second. Bob had more, Bob had more than one item he wanted to bring up.
No, no, that was it.
Oh, I thought you said you had more than one. Okay, Pat?
Okay, the, the thing I would like to bring up here is that under the charter, the various committees that are supposed to have, that do have something to do with planning, and transportation is definitely part of planning for the town, are supposed to at least yearly report to the planning board as to what they're doing and what their hopes and dreams are for their committee, so that we can give feedback on it.
It's still, it's still in the committee.
It just doesn't happen.
I mean, that's still in the charter.
I know it is, but it just doesn't happen. And so my question here is, particularly since transportation has so much to do with what we are as a town and our planning efforts, is this something that the board might want to take on under a subcommittee, much like the local comprehensive plan? It's our responsibility. Throwing it out, and the selectmen would have to say, yeah, fine, you know, we'll dissolve...
We would become the transportation committee?
We would have a subcommittee of planning board.
Ooh.
Of, say, three of our...
Some of our board members and others.
And we could appoint other people who have expertise in it from the town.
Or invite the most existing members of the transportation...
Precisely, to join.
All right, let's, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we think about that and, and bring it up at, at our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
But that would depend upon the selectmen to...
That would be a major, that would be a big change for us and we'd have to be willing to, we'd have to have members on this committee willing to serve on that subcommittee. So you, so before you say yes, consider whether or not you're willing to serve. And now, Joe?
Yeah. In a future meeting, I would like to bring up a review or at least discussion of 240-26C of the bylaws.
And that is...
It's a part of the general residential zoning that allows for affordable housing.
Okay. All right, so we can put that on the agenda.
When it fits.
Is that real short?
No, it isn't. I just don't want to discuss it anymore because I'm not allowed to.
Right, I understand, okay, right, okay. Any other items that people want on the, on the future agenda? Sounds like we've got a couple. I think I had a couple too, but I can't remember what they were. I'll think of them. Anyway. Okay, correspondence. I do have some correspondence which I do want to read. I hope you will bear with me. And because it, it has to do with our, two of them have to do with our developing of our, our wind turbine bylaw. I'm going to start with those and then I'll finish with something else. The first, the first letter is from the Woods Hole Research Center. And as you know, they have a wind turbine. And this is from Dr. Eric Davidson, who is the president and director of the Woods Hole Research Center. Dear Chairman Herbst, dated June, June 28th of 2010. Ooh, I wonder, that must be a typo on their part, because we received it June, July 2nd of 2012.
Mail slow.
I'm going to assume that there was a typo on their part. It has to be.
That would not be a bold assumption.
It has to be. Here's the letter. I'm going to circle that and then just put a question mark. Here's the letter. Dear Chairman Herbst, thank you for the opportunity to comment. As owners of a 100 kilowatt wind turbine on our campus at Woods Hole, since the fall of 2009, we have been following the controversies around Falmouth's 1600 kilowatt municipal turbines, as well as the Notice 1600 kilowatt turbine. That's the one at, at Tech Park, I believe. Please note that, that those large turbines are three or four times taller and produce 16 times more electric, electricity than the wind turbine on our campus. Our 100 kilowatt wind turbine provides us with significant portion of energy needs for our campus and does it cleanly and with a minimum of noise. In combination with our large array of photovoltaic panels, we avoid emitting any pollution to the neighborhood from the two buildings on our campus. Our main office building is located only 150 feet from the base of the turbine, yet no member of our staff of 55 has complained about noise or vibration, or has any staff member complained of or suffered any ill effects from our wind turbine. In fact, staffers often eat their lunch or meet at picnic tables for informational meet, for informal meetings at the base of the turbine. Any issues with occasional shadow flicker have been addressed with window shades. We have been open in dealing with the neighbors about our concerns. We have adjusted our turbine to avoid flicker on our one neighbor's home during specific periods of the year. We have invited other neighbors to provide specific flicker details so that we can attempt to mitigate. We have invested in programming that allows the wind turbine to reduce speed or shut down at certain times because neighbors believe that winds from a certain direction at high speeds increase the sound from their vantage point. To our knowledge, the only complaint this year, 2012, has been from a resident of Ransom Road, whose home is 900 feet away and on the opposite side of Busy Woods Hole Road. This person has complained about vibrations, saying that they emanate from our turbine. The complaint was restated at the recent Public Board of Health hearing on May 24th. If invited, we are willing to visit the home when the vibrations are being felt to allow us to witness any disturbance. However, we are very strongly doubt that we are the source of the vibrations this person feels. Cape Cod is blessed with among the best wind resources in New England, which can of course be a major future source of clean energy at modest cost. We are thus helping to determine the renewable energy options for the future. Wind turbines help lessen air pollution, reduce our dependence on foreign fossil fuels, and are central to sustainable energy independence on Cape Cod and elsewhere. Sincerely, Dr. Eric A. Davidson. The second letter is from Mr. Day O-Mount. It was received, it was, it was dated July 3rd of 2012 and received July, received July 5th. Dear Chairman and Madam Vice Chairman, thank you and your board for your efforts to draft the new bylaws to regulate wind turbines in Falmouth. Those of us who have been affected by the industrial turbines have learned enough to know that industrial sized turbines are not the only size that can cause problems. Your new rules will be crucial to successful use. I recently learned that the Treetops Condominium Association and the Woods Hole Research Center, which we just heard, read a letter from, have a memorandum of understanding in place to deal with the noise problems from a, from the relatively small Woods Hole Research Center turbine. It is a positive step when turbines, excuse me, it is a positive step when problems can be worked out between neighbors. However, as you have heard in your testimony, at least one other Woods Hole Research neighbor has had problems that have not been able to be worked out. When direct dialogue doesn't work, what does the town offer to do? Question mark. Is the Woods Hole Research Center turbine in violation of state or town noise guidelines? Question mark. If the neighbor's dog barks, the police will come. In the case of wind turbines, the answer so far has been, those affected can complain, but the town itself will do no testing. Turbine noise testing is complex, time consuming, and if contractors are involved, expensive. Ultimately, the DEP had to assume responsibility for testing wind one and wind two, taking over two years. As the board works on the bylaws to permit new turbines, please consider that a complaint and testing system needs to be established at the same time. One approach would be that any turbine should be tested for compliance after installation. Compliance must be defined by the permit and the permit should stipulate the consequences of non-compliance, up to and including removal if permit conditions cannot be met. A complaint testing capability would be, would still be needed if subsequent operations prove to be a problem. Sincerely, Day O-Mount. Two letters to be considered. The last letter, correspondence, is from the town manager, dated July 2nd, 2012, received July 6th, to Chairman Herbst. Subject, land use vision map. Dear Ralph, I am writing on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. At the board's regular meeting on June 4th, the four members of the board present voted unanimously, unanimously as follows, quote, "To send a letter to the planning board requesting that they take action on a land use vision map for the town of Falmouth and that the Board of Selectmen would help them in any way that it can," unquote. As you may know, the board in recent months has been discussing the absence of a land use vision map for the town of Falmouth and the ramifications of this in working with the Cape Cod Commission. Most recently, this issue arose regarding a current proposal from Teledyne to significantly expand their corporate facilities within the town. Thank you for your assistance of the planning board in moving this forward expeditiously. Please advise if I, Heather Harper, or town staff members can be of support in working with Brian Curry and the planning board in furtherance of this. Sincerely, Julian Susso." I copied the Board of Selectmen, Heather Harper and Brian. So, just to review, as I recall, we had discussed this, and Brian, please help me if I'm, if I misspeak, but I believe that we took a look at this proposal about a year ago from the Cape Cod Commission. And we had decided more or less, basically, that what we had in place currently, our zoning bylaws, were dealt sufficiently with the land use here in Falmouth. Am I reasonably correct in that statement?
It was a, it was a few years ago.
It was a, more than, more than a year?
More than a year, okay. And at that time, it was, related to the board that this was a voluntary effort and there were no regulatory implications. I guess in 2009, that all changed and now there are certain regulatory implications with regards to the regional policy plan. So I guess the question would be to revisit that, now that there is a link to this map, supposedly, to actions that will be taken by the Cape Cod Commission, with developments of regional impact. So let me, let me just advise the board, I have no sense of urgency.
You have no sense of urgency?
I have no sense of urgency.
Okay.
However, I think we'll take some time and revisit the question. I'll discuss it with the commission staff and its executive director, they're all very nice people. Find out exactly how many other towns have taken advantage of the threshold changes. It's a wholly different application process attached to this map. My understanding is that no town has taken advantage of it because the application processes are fairly onerous. So if I can find a relatively easy way and time, effective way to do this, I will. But I, I have no sense of urgency to convey to the board that the town needs this.
Okay, well, there's a difference of opinion there because the Board of Selectmen feel that there is some urgency because they asked us to move it forward expeditiously. I would be willing to, I think an immediate response to this letter is required, of which I am willing to sign and forward to the Board of Selectmen. And I, I would like us to, at this time, come forth with an idea to, for, to draft this letter and what it should say. It seems as though, I am not aware of an issue regarding Teledyne's expansion of their corporate facilities. We had voted to, this is up on, help me with the street.
Edgerton Drive.
Edgerton Drive. And Paul, I believe this happened before your time here, but up at the top of Edgerton Drive, there was a large piece of property on the left-hand side that was under control of the economic, EDIC, Economic Development and...
Investment.
Information.
Investment.
Investment, okay. Corporation. And they, they chose to sell that property, which was, I believe, the last piece of property under their, under their jurisdiction at the time, to Teledyne. Because Teledyne, I believe, bought Ventos, which is across the street, and then Teledyne wanted to expand their operation and everybody thought, once we looked at it, it was going to generate jobs in the town, considerable number of jobs, probably some tax, considerable amount of tax revenues because it would be an improved piece of property, a large improved piece of property. And so the planning board agreed that it was a wise thing to do and, and it happened. Now, I don't know what they're referring to here as, because most, it says, because most recently this issue arose regarding the current proposal from Teledyne to significantly expand their corporate facilities with the town. Do you happen to know anything about that, Brian?
Yeah, let me, let me just gather the information for the board. Right now, Teledyne is moving forward in their hardship exemption process with the Cape Cod Commission. There could have been, let me, may gather some information for the board and not speak off the cuff here. If there's a sense of urgency on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, let me find out exactly what that is and come back and report to the board.
Okay, do you think that a, a, a letter signed by me stating what you're going to do on, on our behalf would be appropriate?
I, I think a response eventually is appropriate. Again, that vote was taken... Again, that vote was taken.
This vote was taken June 4th.
And we received the letter.
July 6th, a month later.
Then I think the board has the same timeframe to fashion a response.
So, in other words, you're saying that the sense of urgency, since it took them a month to get us the letter, is really not that urgent?
I, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
I think the board is within its rights to take.
I'll say.
Take that amount of time to formulate a response.
I'll say, okay. We could, we should be able to, we should be able to, if we respond in less than a month, we've beaten their, their goal, so. Okay, well, at our next meeting, Brian will brief us, and we'll decide whether we'll send a letter and what, what the letter should say. Is that, is, how's that sound? So that, that will be another item for our agenda for next time.
We'll have discussion at that time.
Yeah, okay. That wraps up correspondence. I need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Second.